Order this Talon Town Council annual budget presentation meeting on June 17th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. You'll all stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
To the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation. Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Liberty. Justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Welcome to the annual budget presentation. Only one thing on our agenda tonight, and that is pursuant to C9-9 of the Talon, the Town of Talon Charter, the Town Council shall arrange for an annual budget presentation. The annual budget presentation is intended to provide information and encourage public discussion. After this, we'll have public participation and then adjournment. So, let's get the presentation up. Hi, everybody. Welcome, welcome.
Interesting. It seems to be having, can you see that, Tammy? I can't.
I can. Yes, I can. Town of Talon 2020-2021 Annual Budget Presentation, presented by me, Tammy Nutio, Town of Talon Town Council Chairwoman. All right. 2020 in review. Six months into 2020, and just about every assumption we've had has changed from life to work to school and to government. First and foremost, I'd like to recognize the fact that we lost four residents to COVID-19 here in Talon. Excuse me. I'm sure you don't want to hear my dog barking. And each of those families has our sincerest condolences for individuals touched many, many lives, and they are mourned. Very quickly in the year, we had to make sure the town was ready to handle this COVID-19 incident. We had to make sure we had PPE for all of our town employees and first responders to be able to work in our new environment. We needed to create staffing models that combined working at home to stagger in-office hours for our staff. Students and teachers had to quickly adapt to online learning, and parents had to adapt to working at home, all while being their child's learning assistant.
I apologize, Matt. I'm so sorry. My screen just bugged out. I think I'm back. Here we go.
You're back. Yep. Most importantly, we had to put town plans in place at the town level to protect our residents, the vulnerable and the hardy. Without our dedicated and talented staff, Talon would not have fared as well as we have, and we sincerely owe it to all of them. Throughout this, we've seen a significant number of our businesses closed. Slowly, they are reopening. Unemployment has kind of wavered between a solid 11% to 13%, and the link at the bottom is where you can gather that information if you'd like to review it. And that doesn't account for anybody who was put on furlough or had their hours reduced. The majority of our businesses here are starting to reopen, but we understand that not all of them may. Unemployment number, the highest since the Great Depression. And it's been, it's been rough, but it's, we're turning the corner. The next thing that was new for us this year is the governor passed an executive order where we were forced to adopt a budget without having a town referendum by June 30th. Our public education model was at risk. Schools were forced to close, and for the first time in our history, we would be teaching kids in an online format. While Talon maneuvered extremely well to be able to provide some semblance of normal, normalcy to these kids, there's still a lot of uncertainty around what schools will look like in the fall. And the entire in-house public education model is at risk. It's highly dependent on COVID and what happens in the next, the next season. State grants at risk. The legislators are being called back to deal with the very significant state budget shortfall, not only for this year, but for the next two years. While we've already received our state grant money for the current year, we have been told that with the expected gap as big as it is, that everything is on the table going forward. So we are going to have to be very active with our legislators to make sure that Talon's voice is at the table when it comes to the grant dollars that we are receiving. Right now, we're still figuring out what life is going to look like during COVID. From working parents to school sports, education models, to senior centers, first responders to the library, all we can say for certain is it's going to be a while, if ever, that we go back to our pre-COVID lifestyle. Next. So, all of those things were happening, and the Town Council had to work rather quickly. From an interrupted budget process where we were two-thirds of the way through, and then pause to come back down, look at all of these things, and come up with what our new priorities were. And for this Town Council, our budget goals were to pass tax relief for those that were impacted by COVID-19, to put through a zero-mill rate increase, maintain all services as proposed in the adopted Board of Education budget and the Town Manager proposed budget, and to utilize funds available for the current year and pre-purchase items from next year's budget to reduce the full year 2020-2021 spend. In order to do that, we knew we were going to have to increase the usage of our unallocated general fund to offset our budgetary gap to enable a zero-mill rate increase. What we're going to review tonight is what the Town Council's goal were and how this budget meets those goals. All right. So, back on April 14th, 2020, the Talon Town Council voted unanimously to adopt resolution to approve participation in the tax deferral program set forth by the Governor's Executive Order 7S. This program allows eligible taxpayers, businesses, and nonprofits and residents a 90-day deferment of any taxes on any real property, personal property, motor vehicles, and municipal water or sewer charges. For those eligible taxpayers, July 1st, 2020 installment will become delinquent on October 1st, 2020. Eligible taxpayers, businesses, nonprofits, and residents are those that can attest to significant economic impact by COVID-19 and/or those that document that they are providing, providing relief to those significantly affected by COVID-19. So in that case, if you are a landlord and you are holding off rent for your tenant, you can show that you are providing relief, and you can also apply for the COVID-19 tax relief program that we have. The thing that's important about this is if you've been economically impacted by COVID-19, it would benefit from having this three-month stay for your taxes. We urge you to fill out the form located on the attached website on this form, and it's also on the talon.org site before July 1st to sign up for the program. If several people applied for this program and took advantage of the deferral, there would be a potential class cash flow problem for the town during these three months. Approximately 50% of our homeowners pay their taxes via their mortgage company, and those individuals are not applicable in this program because mortgage companies are going to continue to pay the taxes as they normally would have. If the full 50% of people who independently pay their taxes were to be approved, we could potentially have an incoming revenue shortfall to offset our expenses. Only reason I mention this, it's not to deter people from applying for this program. We want every single person who needs this program to apply for it. But it's something that is going to come back and touch a little bit further in the presentation. It's another reason why we have to have a hardy unassigned fund balance. If we were to have a high influx of people applying, we would have to cover the shortfall in revenue temporarily until the revenues come back in. One of the things that Mike and I had asked on the governor calls is we have asked the governor and his senior aide to possibly give ECS grant money earlier than usual to help offset this potential timing issue. But we were kind of told that ECS is a legislative issue, and we would have to be, that would have to be taken up with the correct body. So it's out there as a question, but we do not have any feedback yet as to whether or not it would be approved. Next slide. Okay, the second thing that we wanted to achieve was a zero-mill rate increase. The main goal of the Town Council was to pass a budget that reflected the needs of our citizens, mainly to recognize the need for stability in their tax rate or a zero-mill rate increase. In order to do that, we would have to do a few things. One of them was we were going to have to utilize any significant savings from the 1920 year to pre-purchase any items from the 2020-2021 year, preferably ones that were not recurring expenses. We would need to remove any additional increases that were not needed, and we would need to utilize the fund balance to temporarily offset the expense increase. This is, it's very important to note. A zero-mill rate increase does not mean a no-tax increase. This was a revaluation year. 3,382 properties this year decreased in value. Those people will see a savings on their taxes this year. 377 properties had absolutely no change. Their tax rate will stay flat this year. 2,790 properties were increased in value. Those 2,790 properties will see an increase in taxes this year based on their new assessed value. That's 43% of our residents or business owners can expect to see an increase in their taxes with this zero-mill, this zero-mill rate budget. There is a link on here also. If you go to the town website and search for the town, the tax calculator, you can put in your old and your new assessment if your, if your house value changed, and you'll see the changes in your taxes for the upcoming year. So I encourage you to look at that and know whether or not you will be seeing an increase. Next is to maintain, the Town Council's budget maintains all services as presented in the Board of Education approved budget and the Town Manager's proposed town budget. Actually, we accelerated the addition of a firefighter and EMT from April of 2021 to January of 2021. There are no staff reductions from those approved budgets, no cuts in programs, and this does include the one free bulky waste pickup in the fall still. That's a big one everybody seems to ask for. Next is the approved fiscal year 2020-2021 budget expense review. For this year, we're looking at a 0.72 expense increase, which will be mitigated by increasing the usage of our unassigned general fund balance. You may look at this and wonder why the town's increase is slightly higher than the other areas. One of those reasons is availability of end-of-year savings in the amount of programs or non-people-related expenses in the town budget. The town has lowered their original budget ask by $81,000 of non-people-related expenses or programs-related savings, which include hardware, consulting, diesel, and a couple other smaller ones. There are no repeatable expenses that will have to be added back in next year. On the Board of Education side, they had a significant savings due to the impact of COVID-19. Approximately, last time, at the last Board of Ed meeting, it was about $1.3 million. By nature of a school system, they also have an extensive list of programs that they can pre-purchase this year to offset next year's budget. While this helps us minimize the expense risk this year, and it does so without impacting any people or FTEs, it does put us in a bit of a hole for next year, which I'll talk about a little later on. The increase in capital improvements is mainly driven by a ramp-up of the Vernon Sewer Power, Vernon Sewer Plant Project. Wow, that was a tongue twister. And that's phasing in over the next couple of years. It also includes $100,000 for the Birch Grove Security Guard and the Birch Grove moving expenses that are in that capital area. Debt service is just the start of an increase that we can expect to see over the next four years for the Birch Grove Building Project. Okay, general fund information. The unassigned fund balance is used as a balancing entry. If you look at how budgets are built, you'll see in our expense expectations, in our revenue expectations, we use the general fund balance as the quote-unquote plug to balance our budget. If things change throughout the year, the plug changes. For instance, if you look at what's on here, and expenses of $1 million and revenues of $900,000, when we're building the budget, we would say we expect to use $100,000 of the fund in order to be able to have our budget balance out. Now, if you spend less in your expenses throughout the year, you're going to use less of the fund. If you receive more revenues, you use less of the fund. At the end of the year, you look at your total and your encumbered expenses, which should not be higher than what you budgeted, and then you compare to your total revenues received, and then there's a gap. Whatever that gap is, if it's less, you're going to use the amount of money that you thought you would from the fund. If it's more, you're not going to use it. So that kind of helps explain the the fund usage and the charts as you look when we go up or down throughout a year. Extra revenue or less expenses means money is going back. And if you don't, if you, if you're unplanned and you expect to use it and you have to use it, you'll see it go down. That's just a little background on fund usage. So for this year, for the 1920 fiscal year, we originally planned to use $300,000 of the fund. Due to the COVID-19 virus, the town is expecting spending to be $211,124 less than planned, so fewer expenses. And that's after pre-purchasing what we could for programs for next year. We're estimating that we will receive $124,714 more in revenue than planned. The Board of Education is anticipating, based on the last Board of Ed meeting, spending $642,553 less than spent, than what they planned, of which the breakdown that they are going to suggest back to the Town Council is a 30-40-30 split. So 30% or $192,765 would, they would be asking for that to go to the Education Reserve Fund or the 1% Fund. $257,021, they would be asking for that to go to the COVID-19 Fund that we are going to be looking at establishing for the Board of Ed. And then $192,765 will go back to the general unallocated fund to offset the half-million dollars usage that we have projected in there right now to use for next year. So instead of using the $300,000 like we originally anticipated, we're actually going to be putting $528,603 estimated back into the fund. Let's see. That gets us to the debt plan. The current budget reflects an increase of debt spending of $50,000. In 2021 and '22, that spending will increase another $150,000 for the Birch Grove Project, which is approved for $46 million in spending for total. Any risk to this approved project total would require additional debt to be taken out and would add to the tax increase that's already factored in. The debt will continue to increase for four more years before it begins to drop back down, and after seven years total, it would be back down to the current $4.55 million that we have. Included in this debt plan also is $3 million for expected fire station renovations at three stations to bring it up to code and address and address space needs, and also to handle the crumbling foundation that's at Station 140. Capital plan. Our original capital plan was $196,667. The Board of Ed removed $45,000 of projects that they're planning to pay for with their 1920 available funds. We switched $20,000 for the Fire Marshal's Car to the Capital Non-Recurring Fund, and the town removed $39,100 for the ADA connecting pathway, the underground fuel tank at the jailhouse, and the PZC permit software, which we are also paying for with 1920 available funds. We then increased the capital plan for the Birch Grove non-grant capital account, $100,000 for project-related expenses that were included in the Board of Ed operational budget. The new total for capital is now $192,567. For a future state fiscal year 21-22, in the business world, you never look at one year. You're always looking at a rolling two or three years out. So just trying to prepare everybody for what we know for next year before we even get there. So for this year, we're looking at the 0.72% increase, which we talked about. But that includes items that we paid for that were originally in the 2020-2021 budget. Several of those things will need to be paid for again in the 21-22 year. We've used the fund balance to mitigate this 0.72% increase, but we are increasing the expenses, and that will flow to next year's budget. This zero-mill rate increase is a temporary action. It's a year in relief that will have to be fully funded next year. If we combine the current expense increase of 0.72% with the known expense items that we're aware of for the next year of the 0.8%, we're looking at just over 1.5% potential increase to start the budget year, the budget process for next year. If you recall, our original budget request, combining the Board of Ed and the Town Manager proposed budget, was around 1.8%. With these changes in the prepayments, we still stand to be around that number, just not until next year comes. The knowns that we know of, one on the Tom side for $30,000 is the hiring of the new firefighter and EMT in 2021. That will go from a resource for half of the year to a full year. We're estimating that to be about $30,000. On the Board of Ed side, this is from Dr. Willett's spreadsheet, which shows the possibility of $147,030 of programs that will need to be put back into the budget. And the possibility, this one is really, I put it in there, but it's, it's one that's, I think, is kind of foggy, especially with information that I learned at work today. The possibility of insurance increase we're paying for ahead of time is about $86,000. That may or may not have to be added back in. It's going to depend on the insurance reserves and claim utilization, which right now, insurance companies have forecasted that they have seen a 40% to 50% drop in claim utilization in the last few months, and 50% of that drop, they expect to not come back. Capital improvements will increase for the Vernon Sewer Plant and several school projects, and then debt service will increase for the Birch Grove Construction Project. That is an additional 0.8, gets us up to the one point, little over 1.5% that we're starting the budget year out with. What is not included in this number, which are all things that we're going to have to deal with and look at, is contractual wage increases, contractual service increases, diesel, electricity, consultant services, et cetera, and any Birch Grove expenses that may be deemed ineligible by the state. This is important because there's two separate projects going on right now, the Portables Project and then the actual building project. If the portable project, which is currently being reviewed, if the state comes back and says there are $100,000 of ineligible expenses, then we would have to pay those expenses, and that's not accounted for anywhere in this budget or in this plan right now. So, any ineligible expenses, we're going to have to figure out how to deal with going forward, and we won't really have a good idea on that for a little while. So, mitigating 2020 and 2021. We don't know what next year is going to bring in terms of COVID or the response that we're going to have to have. We do know, we do have the advantage of having successfully navigated the current epidemic. We were still able to provide town services to our residents. We were very quickly put in place, praise to the Board of Ed, they very quickly put in place an education plan for the students, and we all regularly reached out to our most vulnerable citizens. We have the tools in place to go back to EOC regular calls. We'll have the staff ready to maneuver if work at home is needed again. We'll have a bank of volunteers to help coordinate our response, and we'll be able to do all of these things quickly. The Board of Ed currently has a committee formed right now that's going to be looking over the reopening of the schools, and will also be looking at continuing education through the possibility of resurgence in the fall and winter. It's imperative that the town be fluid in the upcoming year, operationally and fiscally, to be able to flow between a work-at-home and an office model. We need to continue to be fiscally conservative to ensure we're saving where possible so we can adapt any changes that may come. We are going to be looking at establishing a COVID-19 Fund for the Board of Education that will house some of the savings they have left over from this year to help with any unexpected associated expenses in relation to opening the schools in the fall, and then also monitoring what happens if there's a spike or resurgence. We will continue to fight at the state level to ensure any expenses that come from this new school model comes with equal funding for our students here in Talon. And we need to make sure we have the capability to very quickly transition back to a work-at-home model should the virus spike again. In conclusion, we passed tax relief for those impacted by COVID-19. We adopted a zero-mill rate increase. We maintain all services as presented in the Board of Education approved budget. Sorry, kids came home. We maintained all services as presented in the Board of Education approved budget and the Town Manager's proposed town budget. We accelerated the addition of a firefighter and EMT from April to January, and we utilized higher-than-typically, than typical, unallocated general fund usage to offset, my dog is really fighting me right now, to offset budgetary gap to maintain a zero-mill rate increase. Beyond the budget. Lonely. I think like I was being invaded. Talon is truly an amazing town. What this virus has shown us is that despite our individual differences, our residents truly care about each other. We support our businesses. We support our first responders. We support our elderly. We support our students. We support our staff, and we support each other. I put a little word cloud together of all the different things that I've been seeing kind of pop up on social media, of all the things that people are doing here in Talon safely within the COVID requirements to make sure everybody still feels in touch with each other. And this is just a smattering of the ones that I could find. Some really great things on here from the Historical Society Quiz of the Day. The Board of Ed has served nearly 23,000 meals to children in the Town of Talon. There's free Zumba. There's free yoga from the rec department. We've seen food drives. Our senior, our senior center doing serenades for the, for the other seniors. We've all mastered Zoom. So many things that have been happening here in town that I think we should just take a second to be thankful for. With that being said, that is my presentation. If anybody has any questions, by now we're all pros. You can raise your hand. We will get to you if you are on a call and not an electronic device. Star nine to raise your hand. Let's see, I will unmute you if you have any questions. That gets us to the public participation part.
Please remember to state your name and your address, please. Thank you.
I always forget that part. I am not seeing anybody. Tonight is my anniversary, so, you know, I can't say that I'm totally hurt that nobody has any questions. All right, looks like nobody has any questions. Going once, going twice, three times. All right, with that.
Oh, there's, there's one.
Oh, no. Steve, he's going to do the adjournment. Go ahead, Steve.
Oh, we have to unmute Steve.
Oh. Where is he? Did I not unmute him? Unmute. You there, Steve?
No worries. So with no public participation, move to item six, adjournment, identity and motion.
Actually, I think Karen has her hand up now.
Okay.
So, sorry, I'll get right back to you, Steve.
No worries. I'll mute myself.
Karen? Did I unmute her? Nope, she's not unmuted. Is she unmuted now?
I am unmuted now.
There you are. There you are.
At the same time. I, it's not something we have talked about on the Board of Ed side a lot, but once school is out and I realize we've, you know, we've served a lot of meals during the shutdown, and what is the plan for the town if they're thinking about continuing meals over the summer? I don't know if Dr. Willett wants to chime in on that one.
I haven't heard anything about that, have you, Mike? You're muted.
Yeah, I have not personally, but I do see maybe Dr. Willett, would you have any information for us?
Yes, the, the Town of Vernon will be providing meals for
Yes, the the town of Vernon will be providing meals for any families who need it over the summer. We, we, we will discontinue doing that but at the end of the school year, but we have on our forums refer. We refer families to Vernon. Only some districts were allowed to do it any further.
Oh, okay. So if anybody in Talon wants to continue doing that, they have to go to Vernon to pick up their meals?
They would click, they would go to the Vernon site. I have it all linked up there on the page that they would normally order for Talon. And they'll just jump onto the Vernon site and they can order them from Vernon.
Thank you. I did not know that.
Over the summer. Yeah.
That's good. Anybody else? Are there any other questions or anybody else? I don't see anything, Steve. I mute you. I think, I don't know if I can unmute.
There you go. Okay, we should be good now. So with that being said, I entertain a motion to adjourn at seven thirty P M.
Lou, Lou looks like he's stuck. He's raising his hand. Hold on, let me see if I can get to there. Unmute. Somebody stepped. There you go. No?
One more time, I saw it mute and then.
I know, I unmuted it and then it went back to mute.
There you go.
He seconded. Oh, gosh, I need.
We're gonna have to unmute everybody.
I'm gonna have to unmute everybody. Okay, I'm gonna unmute you as I go around. Alright, Steve?
Bye.
Lou? Lou, you good with? Yep, yes. Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra?
Hi.
John, oh, hold on. John?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
And I'm an I, so it is unanimous. Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening.